Recording in progress.
Hey, welcome to the regular meeting. Well, this irregular meeting of the Planning Commission on Tuesday, June 18, 2024. This meeting is called to order. Micah, please take the role.
I'm gonna turn it over to Christina today, so.
Okay, Christina.
Commissioner Privatalli.
Here.
Commissioner Rodby.
Here.
Commissioner Zamudzi.
Here.
Commissioner Saudi.
Here.
And Chair Havman.
Here. Now, to the order of the agenda. Are there any commissioners that would like to request changes to the order of the agenda? I think there's only one thing, so we'll proceed with it. Next, we'll move on to the meeting procedures. The City of San Rafael remains committed for all to participate in our public meetings. I want to welcome all that are making the time this evening to participate. Each member of the public may provide three minutes for comment. This will ensure we have the opportunity to hear from everyone. Micah, would you please tell us how public comment will work this evening? Or Christine?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. Thank you, Chair Havman. This meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube and via Zoom. Viewers can watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda or by dialing 669-449171 and entering the meeting ID, which is 840-98977308. In order to provide oral testimony, however, speakers must be present. Display it on the podium as a timer to help stay within the allotted time. You are invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you reside in, or if from outside San Rafael, you may indicate that as well.
Next on the agenda is oral communication for the public. Remarks on non-agenda items are welcome at this time and may be on anything within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Remarks on agenda items will be heard at the time the item is discussed. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak on items not on the agenda? No, we have one person.
Hello, my name is Amy Likeover. My husband Joe and I live in Gerstal Park. Just a suggestion for future, especially when you have this continuation meeting. In the staff report, it mentioned the ordinances, and there was no hyperlink to the ordinances. I had to know to go up to last meeting's, you know, link and then find it there. So I arrived without having that information. It was explained. Thank you very much for considering that.
Thank you for letting us know. Anybody else? No? Okay. Then I see there are no items under the consent agenda this evening. We have one action item this evening. The San Rafael Planning Commission will meet to consider an ordinance amending titles two, fourteen, and fifteen of the San Rafael Municipal Code to eliminate the Design Review Board and transfer existing duties of the Design Review Board to other decision makers. The Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council regarding the ordinance. As the commissioners know, this is a continued item. The public hearing was closed at the last hearing. The purpose of this meeting is to continue the deliberations of the commissioners and, when ready, take an action. We'll go down the line in order that we are seated tonight. Commissioner Rodby, do you have any comments? Comments? I believe we're just continuing the discussion part of.
Through the chair, if I may add, just before we started on that, is, one is just public comment on this. It is really up to, there are people in the audience who have came in here. You can accept public comments if you choose to do so. The other thing, there was a letter from Boston, Marin that actually was placed on the dais that we received on Saturday, so that was after the publication of the packet. So that's what's in front of you on the dais, but I want to share that outreach.
Okay, so at this point, I should open it up to public comment?
If you choose to do so, but as typically we have with members of the public coming and attending, if they want to add anything, because additional thoughts or comments from them.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open it up to public comment. So those who are here in the audience, if you have public comment, please come up, and you'll have three minutes.
This is wonderful. It's the first time I've actually gotten three minutes instead of two minutes. My name is Shirley Fisher. I'm from Terre Linda, and I'm also representing Responsible Growth in Marin. Good evening, commissioners. Tonight, you are considering what your job is as a planning commission and how best to accomplish your work. You need to be clear. Developers' main focus is to maximize profit. That is their job. Your job is planning, maximizing a sustainable, livable environment for San Rafael residents. These two jobs are not the same. Equity and diversity are one of many components that go into planning. People need housing, yes. They also need places to get outside and exercise. They need places to gather and socialize and make friendships. They need places to buy food, get haircuts, fill prescriptions. Children need places to play. All of these are part of your job. You need help to accomplish your job. Residents with expertise in urban planning understand state laws and how to work within their constraints. Architects and landscape designers know how to think out of the box and create livable communities at reasonable costs. To do your job, you need to utilize the skill and knowledge of people with expertise in order to create communities where people can thrive and grow and to not yield to pressures to create sterile food desert ghettos. You need to leverage the expertise in the existing Design Review Board. I urge you to adopt a Planning Commission structure of nine full voting members, including your four district representatives and five at-large members that meet the eligibility requirements of the current Design Review Board. That is, two licensed architects or building designers, one licensed landscape architect, one with background in urban planning, urban design, and one with qualifications in any of the above fields of expertise. These are the criteria that have worked with the Design Review Board for years, and I've been here for 40 years, so I sort of have some personal experience with it. Our city deserves to have this input, particularly as we have so many large projects moving forward. Thank you for your consideration of this request.
Thank you, Shirley.
Hi, good evening again. My name is David Smith. Still doesn't change from last week. Lived in Terre Linda area for, I don't know, 26, 27 years, something like that. Micah did say that you'd received the letter that I had sent in over the weekend, and so thank you for that. I hope you've had a chance to read it. The main points I want to make are actually in that letter, so A, it's too long to get into three minutes, but B, I don't want to bore you by repeating them. But I just do want to stress on the point of, what's the rush now? So much time has been wasted, especially on objective design standards. Over a year has gone by where the DRB's questions were not answered by the city, and yet now, all of a sudden, there's a rush to get this thing finalized. Why? Rush decisions lead to bad results. I gave a few examples in my letter. London, Los Angeles. And then clarifications are needed. In the draft documents that I saw last week, too many inconsistencies, too many things that could be interpreted this way or interpreted that way. So I would just ask that, please, take your time. It's too important to rush. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Good evening. My name is Grace Garrity. I've lived in Terre Linda for 36 years, and I'm a member of Responsible Growth in Marin. It's worth noting that the rush to make an important decision, such as combining the Planning Commission and the Design Review Board, is fabricated. It is far more important, for the sake of the City of San Rafael and its residents, to allow adequate time for commissioners and the public to digest a 261-page report and make a well-thought-out recommendation to the City Council. Mayor Colin campaigned for the City Council, promising transparency, and she doubled down on it during, as mayor. There was inadequate notice to the commissioners and to the public, placing and advertising in the ads section of the IJ, which online readers are not privy to, and frankly, majority of readers don't read that section. That is doing simply what is minimally required by law. The commissioners and residents in San Rafael deserve more than what is minimally required by law. Many cities in Marin County use the section around town, which online readers can read and has wide readership for notifying the public for important upcoming meetings. I know other commissioners are very interested in equality, and online is much cheaper than the paper newspaper, so consider that as well. RGM was glad commissioners requested additional time to provide educated and thoughtful review. There was no need for a rush to schedule a special PC meeting tonight, rather than, as some commissioners requested, next Tuesday at a regularly scheduled PC meeting. Staff interjected that next Tuesday may be difficult, yet that is posted scheduled, so this room would be available. However, if we met on a regularly scheduled PC meeting date, then staff would need to legally notify the public. As documented in our letter, there are two items that are critical in terms of processes that weren't followed. One, not allowing the DRB to approve minutes of their recommendation on the objective standards, and two, not transmitting the DRB's recommendations on Northgate to the PC. However, the city canceled 22 of 26 DRB meetings, basically not allowing the DRB to do their job. So we strongly recommend that you adopt our recommendation to the City Council, nine-member board with five members meeting the eligibility criteria for the current DRB, which has served us all well since 1977. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Grace. Is there anybody else?
Hello, Amy Likeover again. I just, I'd like to point out that in recommending that the Planning Commission assume the duties of the DRB, that it would seem logical for the Planning Commission to also represent in its membership the qualifications of the DRB, and I urge you to consider that. I think part of what's happening in this city is we have so many jobs to get done. There's so many projects. There's kind of a hurry, as was referenced before, but honestly, if the Planning Commission is the only commission that, in addition to staff, that reviews projects, I'd like to urge you folks to think about how, in fact, San Rafael might have an image problem, which is, do we consider ourselves to be a beautiful, visitable city, or do we just consider ourselves as being a city that needs to throw up housing? And if we do consider ourselves to be a beautiful, visitable city, a destination that I think you want to have on your planning commission, those people who represent all of those qualifications, who will be reviewing what is expected of the new planning commission, that they should have those tools. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. If there's no one else, I'll close the public comment period. And we'll move on to questions from the commission to staff. Questions and comments, and we'll have plenty of time for discussion later, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I have a couple of questions for clarification. The December 18th report to the City Council on the DRB recommendation suggested that there would be only one at-large, would be a licensed architect with only one alternate, and now we're looking at two out of the three at-large be architect or design professionals with two alternatives who are licensed architects. So I just wondered what happened between that report and the recommendation.
It's from a staff working through this comments return back through council. He was really looking to establish kind of that balance between that. And in terms of the alternatives, the commission. We have other structures that have similar alternatives, so I think that's where we're looking at that. Also accommodating a good amount of the design professional advice as part of the planning commission was part of that factor. So that's where the alternatives would still have a, as described in our last planning commission hearing, the alternatives still have a voice in the manner they are part of the deliberations they discuss, but they don't get to vote. So it's really trying to bring in that extra design voice and expertise from that, because there is, it is sometimes subjective on the design component. So having that additional voice about like, well, that looks great, but we should look at this direction, too. So it was really trying to find that balance, and it was really brought up by Commissioner Mercado last time we met, was, this was a combination of how to meet multiple needs, and this was a recommendation going forward. So that's why we kind of arrived at the two additional to kind of extend that voice of the design professionals or architects within the planning commission makeup.
Okay, thank you. You know, I guess, you know, I went home and I read everything and thought about it, and, you know, I'm still confused as to how this will work. And here's the reason. I went back and looked at all the DRB meetings from 2023, as well as the Planning Commission meetings, only in terms of time spent in the meetings. They were done in 2024, but I did look at Planning Commission for 2024. So on average, on smaller projects, it's not a big deal. It's 45 minutes to an hour generally. But when we get to the larger projects like Northgate, the time is unbelievable. We've had three meetings, two with the Design Review Board, one where we had a meeting on Northgate, the Planning Commission. That was a total of over 10 hours. So I don't know how combining the two is going to make it easier, because the questions are still going to be there. The community that comes out are still going to be there. And then we will have nine people making comments up here. The time seems to be unworkable. I don't know how fair it is for the community or for staff or for the commission to be sitting here till midnight, trying to make decisions. I don't know about anybody else, but by midnight, I'm not really thinking all that clearly. So I'm not sure how it's going to work. And also on that, the nine commissioners, two don't have a vote, but they're up here making comments and expected to attend. It seems awkward that they can deliberate but won't have a voice in the final decision of the project. So I have some concerns over that, but I'd like to hear what our other commissioners have.
Does staff want to respond to?
In respects, and we kind of went into this at our previous meeting in terms of meeting management, right? So really, that's kind of the discussion. There really will be a good amount of work between, really, the commission body and staff in terms of managing these meetings appropriately. It is anticipated for larger-scale projects that, I do envision this for Northgate, that the first meeting will be a non-voting meeting. It's like a work session to actually go over the project in full description. Allow that the planning commission opportunities to ask questions and provide that detail. So when it returns back to it, there'll be more answers from both staff and the applicant. And other communities don't have the luxury of a design review board, and that's typically how those worked. San Rafael is unique in that we actually have a design review board. Other ones, the planning commission actually handles all applications that come through. So I know that our new principal planner, Christina, CEO, worked with the previous with the City of Sonoma, and that's how that community works. So it is possible. It does happen that way, and really is, it really goes to the makeup of Title II, right? The question of, what's the makeup of the planning mission, the roles, duties, responsibilities? The authority actually is coming from City Council. They're the ones who set that as part of the ordinance. In essence, once the planning commission is seated and set, then it's up to the planning commission staff to help operate and function that. So these are concerns or questions, and as I said before, we're going to have to work together through if this is something that moves forward to council in this configuration, but ultimately, it's up to them to make that determination.
Okay, and just also for clarification, we've already had three meetings on Northgate, so we can only legally have two more? So we have a study session and then another meeting, and that would be it?
No, the requirements on that really comes, the application is deemed complete. So it was deemed complete, so there are five meetings anticipated for Northgate, but it's working with that applicant along those meetings and looking at the agendas of moving that project forward, so.
Okay, thank you.
Before we move on to Commissioner Saudi, I apologize. You mentioned something that staff had a brief report that would like to make tonight?
On the brief side of it, yeah. So just kind of general overview of why we're here and returning back to the planning commission. So we presented a report, really looking at modifications to three titles of the Municipal Code. Title II, which is the planning commission makeup, which is majority of the questions were asked. That's where the additional time was requested. Title 14, which is the zoning ordinance, and Title 15, which is the subdivision ordinance. Both Title 14 and Title 15, it was really a find and replace exercise, looking for anywhere where Design Review Board was mentioned. It was replaced with either the planning commission or the Community and Economic Development Director, and really just who has the authority to approve that permit. So really, that's just the cleanup elements of that. But really, the question mark comes into is really Title II, the makeup, and it's, and I see the struggle. I struggle with this, too, in terms of, you're asked to give recommendations on your own body, like, how was the makeup? How's this work? I want to know. I signed up for this. How's this going to actually function and go through? But really, the ultimate authority on this will be city councils in terms of how they like to actually form the planning commission. So this is where this lands. But I know they value the input from the planning commission, and operationally, we outlined why, the reason why. We've been looking to find consolidation or approaches or assistance within our own process for many years. It's not the first time we've evaluated consolidation of the Design Review Board or changing the format. But with the new state laws that have been adopted, it really does kind of push the direction of the time expectancy to now. The other thing that's really a factor, and I did mention this at the last hearing, was the development and business community just trying to understand the process, right? You know, tell me what I need to all do it. Right now, we're in this weird limbo world where it's like, well, we're evaluating this, but if you walked in and applied today, you're going to the Design Review Board. But they're really looking for some more clarity of process, because they do bank on time, effort, and approach. So that's why resolving this issue and getting it to council for their determination, I think, is a critical, critical action for us, so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Saudi, did you have questions?
And I have a good number of them, so I'll try, okay. I have a good number of them, so I'll try to keep this, I'm trying to try to separate comments from questions. My first question is really about Title II. A lot of my questions are Title 14. The first one is regarding the roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission. If we are hoping to make the process more efficient, and by removing the DRB and basically folding in their functions into the Planning Commission, why were none of the items that were striked in Title II under Design Review Board powers and duties included in the powers and duties of the Planning Commission? And if we, you know, we spend a lot of time questioning what design professionals, what their credentials are, but if all those powers and duties are stripped from the Planning Commission or now don't exist, then those credentials don't mean anything. So I guess my first question is, is why was, why was there a decision not to include those powers and duties in, into the planning commissions?
The response on this would be, the planning commission already has those roles and responsibilities and duties. The power and duties that are of the Design Review Boards are also the planning commissions. You have to remember, they're advisory body. So when they actually give a recommendation, it's usually to the approval body, which in this case is the planning commission or City Council. So if you look through them, you know, to serve as an advisory body, well, they're not no longer an advisory body, advisory body. The planning commission now actually has, the planning commission always had those duties. I think I tried to give them that a little bit of detail last time, but the planning commission actually has the authority in this. If there, you may get a recommendation from the Design Review Board, and you may disagree with it, and you have that authority to approve without their recommendation, their recommending body. So those duties have always been the planning commissions and will be.
But there's specific responsibility, even though it says serve as advisory, there are duties or powers and duties that are included in Title II for the Planning Commission that are not necessarily objective duties, but they are more nondescript. And what we're doing here by not including this language is actually in, in so many ways, saying that like, the planning commission is not really looking at design, because we're not really talking about that in, in the language of powers and duties. So I don't see why, why we shouldn't do that. I think that would be a recommendation for me from the City Council, that we should include that language, because there's no reason not to. And just to touch on, those would be, actually, I'll save this for questions for Title 14. My second question would be. My second question would be, sorry, I'm going to go. I'm going to go in order here. So in Title fourteen, I have a number of questions. First of which is under section fourteen oh seven seventy, initial consultation. What we have here is applicants may request an initial consultation with a planning director. And then the previous language is and/or preliminary view by the design review board to review proposed development. That language is stricken. Why would that not be changed to or planning commission? Why would that just be struck?
I'm sorry, you know what page are you on for that?
I'm on page sixty-two, but it's page seventy-six of the PDF of the final agenda packet, sorry.
In this case, it's initial concept plan review. So this is actually not a formal application for review. So this is really done at like a staff level. So that's why even when these came through, they usually did workshops or work sessions, but they're not binding. They're really not part of the permit streamlining act for concept plan reviews. So when you actually file for a formal application review, that's when those would be, trigger in the planning commission review.
But further down in this title, it removes the environmental design review from the design review or planning commission, and it just gives it to the department. So I just don't see why we, it doesn't allow for a request of initial consultation to the planning commission.
One of the reasons that is probably there is you have to be really careful presenting a preliminary project before the body that's making the determination, because they can express opinions about whether or not you're going to support the project or deny the project at a point in time when it's not appropriate. And so typically, when it was before the design review board, they were just making a recommendation. So it's a little bit different. And when it's staff, we can have more informal conversations and talk about the code. But if it's a project that's going to come before the planning commission at a later date, it gets mucky.
Okay, that's a good answer to know. And then I guess on page, well, it's ninety-three of the PDF. But it is page seventy-nine of Title II. This is, this is one, this is one of many instances where there are references to the design review board that don't have anything to do with residential development. And there doesn't seem to be any reason why we can't have this be changed from design review board to planning commission, where it says new streets and driveway grades shall not exceed eighteen percent, unless an exception has been granted by the hearing body and the design has been recommended by the design review board. And I think it was maybe, this might have been a typo, or it wasn't underlined as public works director or fire marshal. But these are like a lot of small things where some of these things, like I know that designer review board is a, it's a body that is recommending items, but they actually have power here. And now we're taking that away from any public process. So like, I guess my question is, why was this not changed from designer review board to planning commission? Other items have been changed to planning commission.
I think it's also looking at the number of opportunities. When we look at streets and driveways for larger scale projects, those would probably be a large scale subdivision, right? When we're looking at these items, that would come to the planning commission. Typically, for smaller projects, like less than four, that would be actually a staff level item. So a lot of times, we're looking at those projects, and it's the public works director and the fire marshal looking in order to see if that actually works or physically work within the actual design parameters of safe roadway access. So the planning commission always has subdivisions greater, greater than four. So that's where this would typically come into play for streets and driveways. So that's how this was viewed from that. But if there's suggestions or alternatives that these should go to the planning commission, I think we're open for that recommendation. It's just a matter of how much do you want to see and under what circumstances? Because this one just talks about new streets and driveways. So those are typically associated with subdivisions.
Okay, great. And then next one is Title fourteen, section sixteen one ninety, under height bonuses. This is page one twenty-four. I think this is one of the most critical ones, especially because, you know, because of the state density bonus laws. There's a lot of areas where we don't have discretion around writing exceptions for height bonuses. So number two and number four in particular, number two and number four. Part of the reason why I think these are so important is because, or the reason this is such an urgent issue that we're trying to get the second special meeting for, and why the city council is having a special meeting on Friday, is because there are a lot of developers waiting in the wings for, to submit projects. One of which is, or is in areas where these two items would have a direct impact. To public courtyards and plazas or passageways that exceed the minimum requirements in the downtown form-based code. These can have allowable height bonus. If not the redesign review board, now it's just the planning director. I strongly believe that this should be something that is in front of the planning commission. In addition to mid-blockage passageways between Fourth Street and parking lots on Third Street, that should be changed to planning commission. This is a location where we know there is going to be a very large development coming to us. And it, I just don't feel really comfortable at all recommending this. This whole thing gets sent to planning commission without these two things changed.
So confirming this page one twenty-four of the packet, and that's just really modifying that to the planning commissioner for height bonuses.
Correct. Number, page number one twenty-five, hotel height bonuses. A height bonus of twelve feet may be granted for a hotel, providing the planning commission finds that the hotel will be a significant benefit to the community and the design consistent with the designer review recommendations. And then it says of the planning director. So I guess my question here was clarification. I guess that modification doesn't make sense to me. Consistent with, okay. So then the planning director and the planning commission would both have to agree that it is needed or required, or is?
Yes. So just like a lot of projects coming in here, usually there's a staff recommendation that would be from the director. So in this case, that's how that would flow for all of it. It's, they said there's some redundant language. And it's just the wording could probably be cleaned up a bit, just to say a height bonus of twelve feet, the requirement to review by the planning commission.
Okay. And then page one fifty-seven, we're going to skip ahead quite a bit here. Under design requirements H and number two, which is stealth design. And this has to do with, I think this is where we get into, oh, this is cell towers. I mean, these are, these are all instances where the DRB, you know, even though the advisory council, they actually do have quite a bit of power and leeway to get things done. It talks about, I won't read the whole thing. A seamless integration would include facade mounted facilities that are flush with the existing buildings. Referral to the design review board may be required to confirm whether a particular design solution would clearly integrate into an existing building or site and meet the intent of stealth design. So that is stricken totally. That sentence is stricken. And I guess I'm hoping that we can change that to planning commission. And I guess my question is, why would that be stricken? And not just change from designer review board to planning commission?
I think you can't add that for recommendation, so.
Okay. And then, you know, we have a number of these. Sorry, this is taking so long.
You want to comment on that? One more clarification, so.
I didn't, I didn't see exactly what we were talking about, but anytime we're dealing with telecom facilities, that's really outside of our purview these days largely. It's all done by the FCC, and so we're very limited. We also have another title in section that overviews all the wireless provisions.
We actually reviewed a cell tower not that long ago. Yeah, we did.
But I'm not saying you didn't necessarily, but we just need to make sure that it's in compliance.
Yeah, our last actual meeting that wasn't having to do with this was AT&amp;T.
It's across the state with telecom, and our ordinance is not being in compliance with federal laws these days. So lots of, just something to be aware of.
Okay.
But to clarify, that was through an appeal process, so.
Okay, got it, yeah. And then, you know, there's stuff about like parking lot screening and landscaping. And, you know, this is page one eighty-eight on the PDF. But section fourteen eighteen one sixty, parking lot screening and landscaping. You know, there's a line that says subject to recommendation by the design review board and with the, well, and approval of a minor design review permit. I guess that got, the design review board part got stricken and with the approval got added. So we're now changing that to a minor designer review permit, which is now like a zoning administrator review, correct?
Yes, that'd be a staff level review.
I'm going to try to figure out which ones are the most important here. Page one ninety-seven on the PDF. And that would be page one eighty-three of the title. Section forty-three, under review authority. And we have application administration authority over provisions. The requirements of this chapter shall lie with the following official bodies or officials. Approval, conditionally approve or deny a sign permit, signs are minus exceptions. And it says, what's stricken is refined to a sign permit application to the design review board for advisory view and recommendation on the design matters relating to a sign proposal. So this got stricken entirely, as well as, do you mind if I keep, sorry, I just want to check. And then, you know, further down, there are other items that have been stricken. There's one, section C, the design review board shall serve as an advisory body to the planning commission and the community development director on all sign programs. Okay, that makes sense why that's taken out. But there are a good number of, I think we dodged some bullets on the design review board with some signs, including like Northgate one. We looked at some of the car dealerships. Those were fine. There were others signed. I just, I would see these as important things that we review that are now. I just don't, with taking these, if we don't have discretion over a lot of these housing elements, and part of the reason we are being told is these changes are being made from, because of SB thirty, or sorry, SB thirty and SB thirty-five, then why are the, I just don't get why a lot of this language is being, a lot of the responsibilities is taken away from a public process and given to the, giving to a staff review level.
I'll just comment for the sign ordinance in general. I mean, it really is a very objective type program. Like, if you get a certain amount of square footage based on frontage, there are prescribed requirements for the height lettering. The only time we really have taken items to the designer review board or planning commission are when they're programmed. So when they're asking for something outside of the norm of the sign ordinance itself, you're asking for a sign exception. Something that's not within the prescribed parameters of the approved ordinance.
Okay. So if there was an exception being requested, how would, would that be a minor design review permit? Or how would that, how would the process be for that?
Well, I wish we had that planning manager here.
I'll just chime in a little bit from my experience while Micah looks that up. I went through a really similar process like this in Sonoma. And one of the thoughts with sign permits is every sign permit we had went to a hearing. But what happened is people weren't asking for permits and they were just putting up signs. And so you want to make the sign rules as clear and simple as possible, so that people follow the rules and get the correct permits. And going to a hearing is very expensive and very time consuming, and it can be a huge barrier to entry for small businesses. Or, you know, to go to a hearing, it's.
Yeah, I know. I think, I think Micah is right, though. It's more about exceptions. So if there is an exception requested, what would be the process for that?
There's actually a section in here on page one ninety-eight of the PDF and one eighty-four of the actual text. It's called exceptions, major and minor, that actually call out that process.
Okay.
And then followed by what the ones that typically go to the planning commissioner sign programs.
Okay. But the appeals, all decisions the community development director, oh, it can be appealed.
And then that goes for all staff level decisions. So the appeal authority is still the planning commissions.
So it looks like the community development director can approve a minor exception. And then the planning commission would have to do the rest. Okay.
As you can see, there are really specific things that are called out of like how the director will be able to approve that or at a staff level. So if there's a point where like, I just want a big sign because, so they're like, okay, well, there's a process for that. Let's go see the planning commission.
Yeah. No, that's good to know, because that's what we saw in front of the design review board. And then I think like, you know, oh, I have a question on this one. Fifty-five. Oh, that's fine. Page two thirty-one. In there. Maybe it wasn't page two thirty-one, twenty, oh. Under, so page two thirty-one of the PDF. And we're looking under the section fourteen twenty-four twenty, authority. So previously, any multifamily residential districts require a buffer landscaping to be modified, subject to review by the design review board, where innovative landscaping is proposed. And then also in all non-residential districts, the minimum landscaping percentages may be reduced from remodel projects, subject to the review of, and it was the design review board. So both of these items are now being transferred to the planning director, meaning exceptions can be made to these minimum requirements through staff and not. Can we transfer those? Can we recommend that those be planning commission then? I think these are going to be a big, especially in large multifamily residential developments.
Well, you have to recall that you'll, the planning commission will likely see those are a major design review permit for large scale new construction. So you'll see new landscaping provisions.
That's not under our subject anymore. It's under the subject review of the planning director. So we're not going to, I mean, if, if the minimum percentages are not required to be reviewed by anybody else than staff, then cannot those exceptions be made by staff under this language?
I think when I look at it, when I read this section, it's. I think when I look at it, when I read this section, it's, um, required landscaping. So you have an approved projects and you want to modify that, that before you'd have to go back to the Designer Board to get that approval. So now we're saying you're going back to the Planning Director for that approval, or Community and Economic Development Director, the different namesakes of the position, but it's a staff level review to modify that. Now, if Planning Commission would like to hold that review, to have those landscape modifications come back to the Planning Commission, I think that's totally.
It's, but it's not just modifications, it's reduction in the requirements, so. I just, I, I guess the pattern, the, the reason for my concern here, and it's not like these are big items on their own, but cumulatively, this takes away like any, any of the real like duties and powers of the Planning Design Review Board, and it just gives them to staff. We no longer have a body that's reviewing these design items that they actually had discretion over.
I, I'm totally open to your suggestions and modifications to keep those authorities at least at the Planning Commission level.
Great. And then we have page 235, the PDF. And this one is under authority as well. A minor environmental design review permit. The zoning administrator shall make determinations on environmental design review applications for any minor physical improvements listed under section 142504B, and a one-time extension to major or minor review permits and design review permits approvals. So what was struck is the remainder of this, um, item B. When, in the opinion of the zoning administrator, an applicant or member of the public in any matter set forth in section 142540 does not meet the applicable review criteria set in fourth section, the application shall be forwarded to the Designer Review Board for its recommendation. Request for the referral that the Designer Review Board may be made by an applicant. So does this then just take all of this under, so does B then move from, it just stays with the zoning administrator then?
The zoning administrator, the director can refer those, any item to the Planning Commission that, that's of question. So that's still, the zoning administrator is still a staff level review, so they have the opportunity to go to the Designer Review Board should they have design questions they want to follow through on. In this case, if there, if this does come up and there are concerns of that level, it would likely be referred to the Planning Commission through the director's authority to refer.
So if that's the case, why wouldn't we just strike Designer Review Board and add Planning Commission?
I think we could, we could accept that, or you can recommend that approach.
Okay. And then, under, um, the following section, 142530, under application, number B, the entire section of conceptual review required is removed. And I guess, why, why can't the Planning Commission provide a conceptual review? This doesn't have reference to the Design Review Board. And it says that conceptual review is optional for development subject to the minor environmental review process, so I guess, I, I guess I'm not sure why we're striking this whole section and we're not just transferring it, some of these responsibilities.
So my, my understanding for this section, for section B, for application, this would be projects that are already subject to Planning Commission review. There is no conceptual option, and that's related to required. So we, we could not require a conceptual review like we have in the past.
So it would be, like, some of these items would then be, um, reviewed like a, like a study session?
Formal application.
Okay.
If you want to bring it forward. You go into a formal application.
Got it. And then I have one more. And then somebody else can have questions. I don't know if you have any left. 402580 addition, oh shoot, I, I don't even, I don't think I wrote the page number down. Yeah, the streamlined review of residential projects, that whole section got removed, and I'm guessing that's because of, we have streamlined review of other projects. I guess my question is like, um, why that whole section, 142570 was struck? It's page 232 of the PDF.
Um, my take of this is it's, all housing projects are streamlined reviewed, so there's no other eligibility requirements. If you look at the eligibility, what they're calling out, like it's a dated provision within our code that was given previously streamlined activities, but within state laws.
They're all streamlined, got it, okay. And they also change every single year. I know, I know, that is, that is a question. And then, um, I guess follow up from the last meeting, do, does staff have, um, the definition of design professional figured out from other sections of our code? Or is that, is that still something that we have to determine once, once we get this passed?
So there is a recommended, if you recall, uh, in the last meeting, I actually did read what that, um, recommended, definition of design professional was, let me see if I can try to track it down, if I've got it off the top of my head. But if you'd like me to track it down, I could read it back later for.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your patience, everybody.
No problem. Um, and for now, I only have sort of one, trying, trying to fully understand question. So in the current world, or, or the old world, um, there, there are projects, big and small, some of which go through DRB, the big go through DRB to Planning Commission, small may go to DRB, not go to Planning Commission. And so the, the search and replace that I think is being requested, um, replacing DRB with Planning Commission in the language, that means that those small projects will now come through, if, if implemented, those small projects would now come through the Planning Commission, in addition to the larger projects, or no?
As Commissioner Saudi just went through, that's really the, the exercise that we're talking about. Like, how much do you want to see, uh, of these projects coming in? So that's really trying to find that balance of, there are items that, you know, as described in, in the previous discussion and comments, there are items that, that may, may appropriately need to come to the Planning Commission versus a smaller staff level review. So I think it's really trying to find that balance, and, uh, that's why I do think this body needs to make a determination if they would like to, how deep would they want to go? They want to see all the smalls, uh, and mediums and the larges? Or is it medium larges or going through this kind of find and replace? And this was an exercise that staff went through with our legal attorney team to really try to find that balance. So, you know, if there are questions or concerns that really need to go the other direction of like, hey, it's, this is, this item's too important to just have at a staff level, the Planning Commission really should have authority over this. So then that's really that, well, that recommendation comes into play, that this should be Planning Commission. And then that's always at the flip side of it, and then the Planning Commission will see all these items as they come in. And, and I do anticipate they'll trickle in at various phases, but, um, it's one of those things we'll have to reevaluate. You know, how, how many times did we look at that landscape bush, you know, like, what is the depth? How many exceptions did we come across? So, so even goes to, to Commissioner Robbie's question about like the management of meetings and times. This is part of that exercise too, to say, how much discretion do we have within these areas? That's why even diving deeper, and this is really goes to the larger question we've been talking about, is the objective design standards. Having a much more robust, objective design standards, a fully vetted process truly give us better guidance as both staff, commissioners, developers, the public, anybody about what is those requirements? So a lot of discretion really has been removed from those subjective design standards. Here are the standard requirements. So, um, I think as we get better at that, as we develop these, these programs and processes, then I do think it will have less, uh, weight on the review of the Planning Commission and staff.
Whether or not the Planning Commission is specified as the DRB is, or was in the documents?
Um, that all, all circumstances, it wasn't, as they said, there was a balance, it was called out as the director or the planning commission.
It was an or in each instance?
Yes, so, but you have to remember, the, the Designer Board had to, since they were not a decision-making body, they didn't make a decision themselves, so they had to actually be in conjunction with somebody else. Either it was staff or the director and the DRB, or it was the Planning Commission and the DRB.
Thank you. Um, others have questions? Commissioner Pravatali?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, first of all, I apologize for not making the last meeting, I was out of town. But yeah, uh, my first question is, um, what sort of process would we use to receive more comments from the public?
Can you maybe describe that better from what, what circumstance, as part of the Planning Commission hearing, or?
This, for this particular issue, like, the public is asking to have more time to provide comments. What sort of process would we use to get those comments? Um, maybe you could describe the timing and whatnot.
Uh, for this item, um, I think this, this is the opportunity, I mean, we had a meeting last week, it was put in through our process of noticing. This was an item actually that, that was continued from December from City Council.
I see.
So there, and then, so there's another opportunity, I do believe this, if we do receive a recommendation of support or denial, it'll go to council for their final consideration.
Okay, so just a typical process, there's, there would be no sort of like special, um, like group assembled or anything like that? It would just follow the normal process?
That, yes, that's correct.
Okay, and, um, why, why do we have the rush? Is it, is it true there are developers waiting for this, uh, uh, change essentially because of the height bonus or whatnot? What, what's the rush?
I don't know if I would consider it a rush, and as I said, this has actually been an item that's been of discussion or questioned for the city for some time. When I look back at the record of like, how many times did we evaluate this? There's been iterations of this request going back for like five or six years. So this, this question has really kind of come to a head. I do believe there is timing considerations, given the amount of uncertainty about our process right now.
I see.
Council gave direction to move, you know, sort of to support looking at this combination item in December. There were some provisions they wanted, they wanted the director hired, they wanted, um, objective design standards or variation thereof approved, and those, those occurred. So now this item is set to come back to them. But as part of that, the Planning Commission needs to look at specifically titles 14 and 15. Title two is really of, of council's consideration, however, just like we do a lot of things, we give recommendations on, um, what's in front of us. So I do believe if you have recommendations on title two, uh, that you should make those, so. But it is of title 14 and title 15, that is really of, of the question of the changes. And the specific to, uh, Commissioner Saudi, um, like at what level is appropriate for the Planning Commission to review versus staff?
Right, right. My next question is for, is it Christina? How are things, how have things gone in Sonoma with this structure? And how long have they been using it? And maybe you could give us sort of like a briefcase study?
It's actually worked really well. Um, so we had an interim step, which helped kind of try it out. And so what we did before we, we'd still have a Designer Review Board, but it's been a slow process. And so what we did to start with is any entitlement that required Designer Review and Planning Commission just went straight to Planning Commission. And so Planning Commission has been reviewing all of the entitlements for all of our larger projects for the last couple of years. And it's gone really well. We have a seven-member body with, uh, an alternate and a youth member. And I think just one, one piece that's sort of missing from the conversation, it's, everybody has limited time and energy. And so it's really taking a look at what is everything that we work on and what's really important, and how does the commission want to spend their time, and how do you want staff to be spending their time? We could spend all day doing sign permits if we wanted to, but then we wouldn't be dealing with climate change and tree removal and reforestation and, you know, you know, developing our community in, in the way that we want to. So I think it's really thinking big picture and how does, you know, what's the highest and best use of the Planning Commission? And what's the highest and best use of staff? You guys are, the city of Santa Fel is in a much better place because you already have administrative processes. You have a zoning administrator and staff has, has authority with built-in noticing and agendas and things like that. So we already have very robust public processes, which is, which is really great. So it, it does, it's not, I don't think it's going to be as big of a change, I think it feels like it. But, um, at the end of the day, what has ended up happening as our Planning Commission is very educated and, um, does a really, really great job digging into the details as you all are already digging into the minutia and understanding the downstream consequences, so.
That, and actually what you said, um, is actually, is a good segue to my next question, which is, um, what criteria does Sonoma use to determine whether or not a project should come to the combined Planning Commission and Design Review Board?
Almost everything, yeah.
Keeping it with, with the Community Development Director, if there, I imagine there is indeed.
Almost everything in Sonoma goes to the Planning Commission. And what that means is, as staff in a tiny department, we spend the majority of our time processing permits and not working on long-range planning and changing the code and doing the forward-thinking things. And so that's really the downside, is the more things you put into that bucket that go to the Planning Commission, the more time that staff spends working on agendas and managing meetings and spending time in here instead of actually doing the work.
And does Sonoma have design, um, objective design standards?
We do.
And does the, um, does the Planning Commission, um, essentially review the projects to confirm that they are consistent with the objective design standards?
Yeah, and the majority of the standards are, are similar to here, it's height, it's setbacks, it's floor area ratio. So there, the number of design considerations has really changed. When I was a planner and I started, it was, "Do we like this rock? Do we like that rock? Do we like this shade of purple? Do we like that shade of purple?" And we're just in a really different, different world now. The planning world moves a little bit slowly and it's very cyclical and across the, you know, the Bay Area, we're kind of moving from this place where we were over-regulating and kind of shifting back and setting clear guidelines and parameters, and then trying to focus our staff time on, on the efforts that are really important to the communities.
That makes sense, okay. Um, are, are there, uh, certain projects that have, um, special meetings? Or, um, and, and are previews allowed?
We do do, we do pre-applications, you can ask for pre-applications in city sessions. It's very tricky because the Planning Commission can ask questions, but you don't want to, you know, take, take a side on, on a position. Um, we offer, uh, the city of Sonoma and here as well, uh, project advisory meetings where applicants can bring their projects forward and have it reviewed by the fire department, police, public work, staff, getting everybody in a room. We always encourage, you know, early consultation, and that's where the majority of the work happens, is with the applicants and the neighbors. And, um, you know, before, it's always better to do all the work before you get to a hearing because it just, you know, it's, it's a lot harder to change people's minds when you've been in the process for two years.
Yeah, and, and does, um, do, do essentially all, all the parties feel, uh, that that's beneficial? Like, the developers also appreciate that or?
I think everybody has appreciated it, number, you know, from a public perspective, everybody only has so much time and energy. So if you talk about a project eight times and you can't make one of the, you know, eight meetings or three meetings, it, it helps just make it really clear that when it's important to participate in what that process is, from an applicant's perspective, it's really expensive to go to all the meetings. It's not just the, you know, if you're, if you're going, sometimes you're hiring an engineer and an architect and an attorney. And if we have five projects on an agenda, you add that up, it's also very expensive for staff. You have, you know, everybody here and opportunity cost, and so, you know, the hearings are very expensive to run.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay. I guess a, a question, um, for, uh, Mr. Hinkley, is that how you pronounce your last name?
It's Hinkle.
Hinkle, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Yeah. So I think that, uh, you know, there's, there's a desire to flesh out the objective design standards to make them, put more detail into them, and I think that would also apply to the downtown precise plan. Do you have a sense of what sort of process we would use to do that?
So, um, as we moved that item forward, uh, to council for adoption for the last version or updated design, um, objective design, uh, standards, the council did ask us to return back to the Planning Commission, uh, with a more comprehensive approach. The initial staff, um, approach on this one was to actually establish, um, one staffing support. So we actually are in that process of hiring, uh, we hired two principal planners who have experience in developing uh, objective design standards for their respective prior communities.
Great.
So, uh, in this case, it's the city of Sonoma, and then one was the city of Oakland. So, um, so a nice balance of small and large cities, and Santa Fel's a medium, so. So with. so with additional staff support on that, really what I anticipate is opening up opportunities for the design professional community to actually all of them. So not just the design review board, actually have workshops, could be workshops on objective design standards. And also looking over our entire, I guess, document library of design standards we have. Hillside guidelines, downtown precise plan. Environment, this is basically designer view regulations. And actually try to consolidate them. Here's all the lists we have here. Let's start to tackle like which ones that that support our efforts and then actually assign objective design standards. The other ones also looking and evaluating something we're working with the Department of Public Works is some of their standards. Their standards also, you know, tree grates. You know, location of drive, like there are certain things that also need that level of.
Tree grades are sort of needed.
I agree. So even even, you know, particularly when we're redeveloping full blocks and potentially down the road. So having those elements of the streetscape standards being very consistent. So so it is anticipated that it would be a full comprehensive redo. And and that really is really for two for multiple reasons, but the one is clarity. Right? Clarity of process and know exactly what I'm looking at because we have a lot of objective standards and subjective standards. But how do we clarify those and actually outline this is a new revamped or objective design standards for the city of Santa Phil in one complete document? Enough to establish even checklists as we go through there. So help both staff, the applicant, planning commission decision makers go through that and make sure that they've meeting those those standards requirements. And also what they do if they don't, like, how do we, you know, and then for housing projects, you know, is it concession or things that they asked for outside of it, but we understand what that is.
Yeah.
So it really is trying to, and it would take a and that was what I asked for is more time to actually dive deeper in that specific project because it is a really comprehensive overview. The other thing too is looking at the operations of our downtown precise plan. You know, it is a newer document. There are provisions in there that we are still working through and finding, boy, that really is challenging. What do we? So trying to get better guidance on on these. So having an opportunity to work with the design professionals and our community members to basically provide input on that of what are the goals and objectives to actually, what was this trying to speak to? So but that is a much larger project that would require a little more time and effort and resource.
Do you? Do you have a sense of the timing of that project?
I do. And the key was actually getting the new hires on actually for assignment of that because that is a really specific and targeted large scale task. I would anticipate at least a project update before the end of the year on overall status because it is a key tool. And that's what I'm saying. This is the tool, the toolbox we have to evaluate projects. Well, we need to evaluate that. So I'd like to actually try to get it done or at least pathwayed, you know, basically established by before the end of the year.
Okay, great. I just have two more questions and I'm asking a lot of questions. So my next question is just getting back to the criteria that would be used to determine whether or not a project came to the planning commission. Do you have a suggestion for that criteria? Then let me provide some more context. I see the relationship, this may be sort of like a unique perspective, but I see the relationship between the planning commission and the city staff as a check and a balance, even though the city staff is not elected. And and I'd like to, for me, it would, I think it would be useful to have criteria that's well defined to determine when the city can basically approve projects based on objective design standards versus when a project needs to go to the planning commission to to do that. And I was just wondering if you have, if what your perspective is on that and if you agree what sort of criteria you would put forward.
I agree with the the concept and approach and really looking at those opportunities to better utilization of our process. I do think that's something that we could flush out as part of, you know, the evaluation of objective design standards. To really understand and really looking deeper into this title fourteen, maybe these codes have been in place since like the seventies. So like it, certain pieces we've changed or modified, but to really maybe look at a much more comprehensive evaluation. I also have to mention one thing that is really high on the list of the department and the city as a whole is updating our zoning ordinance. A lot of those triggers actually are targeted within that zoning ordinance. So if and when this is where you go and this is how you do it. Also land uses, another thing we look at is use permits, right? So we do need to update that. We did update, you know, the general plan. But the other item that has not been updated for some time and is it does need to be moved forward on the work plan is the update of the of the zoning ordinance. So I would anticipate that's where we would capture what you've described to say a very clear direction of when those things go to the planning commission versus staff.
Okay.
I was just gonna add on that the code is really specific about what projects are reviewable by the zoning administrator by and by planning commission. And I'm new, still learning, but my understanding is that the projects that are routed through the design review board are going back to a different approval body anyway. So the actual process and who is approving it isn't changing. And so the code already says, you know, really clearly what they do. So that's that's a lot of what we do on a daily basis when people come in with projects is figuring out what level and who reviews it.
Okay, great. The last question I have is probably going to be the most controversial question I have. And it's about paying the commissioners. So I have spoken to the mayor about this and but it hasn't been for quite some time. It's probably been over a year now. And she brought up a very good point that, you know, it's hard. It's hard to get people to to volunteer for both the design review board and the planning commission. And and that paying people to do this work would be not only probably open up the field, but also solve an equity issue. Because I was just talking to my wife about this before. It's true, like when you've come to volunteer here for a few hours and you don't even get paid to cover babysitting, you're not going to get people who need to get a babysitter, you know, pay, maybe compensated for that. So I was just wondering, is that, could that potentially be on the table as part of this change? Is it? Oh, is it in there already? Oh, really? I didn't know that. Okay, great.
I talked to Mayor Kate a couple of weeks ago, so I think.
Oh, can you turn on your mic?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's already been approved or it's already in the works.
Oh, great. Okay, I would. I didn't follow that. Okay, great. Yes, that answers my question.
Not so controversial.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Sumutzi, did you have questions?
No, I think I think the minutia has been covered pretty well. So we can jump into the discussion.
Okay, great. Yeah, then I think we will turn to discussion among the planning commissioners.
Okay. I guess, given that twenty two of the twenty six DRB meetings of the last twenty six DRB meetings were canceled, I don't think there's any reason to like look at small and large. Like if we're taking on what the DRB was taking on, I I just don't see a reason to strike everything from title fourteen the way it's been stricken. And that is under our discretion tonight. I guess title two, we don't have a lot of, we have recommendations, but title fourteen, we can we can mark that up and change it because that's that's under our purview. What is concerning to me is that the DRB is being dissolved with no powers and duties of the body being transferred to the planning of that body being transferred to the planning commission. There are a number of items in title fourteen that are not impacted by state density bonus laws and are not being transferred to the planning commission. Recently, economic development and community development is now under the same leadership umbrella. So I think, John, like you were saying, how we are the checks and balances of the community development director, similar to what we heard from the public today. The economic development department is here to protect, to create development and economic opportunities for businesses and developers within the city. But the community development department is here to really be make sure that our community is developed in a sustainable, beautiful, responsible way. And those things are can be in opposition. So if we have the same leadership umbrella and then there are opposing interests that are not being checked, it it concerns me that we're then transferring a lot of this language to staff because then the checks and balances are just not happening. So I think that we should really push to get some of the language change in title fourteen to make sure that it is within a public process and and the body here. I think it's good having architects and design professionals on the planning commission if all functions have been eliminated and transferred. What I said, what is it good of having architects and design professionals on the planning commission if all functions have been eliminated or transferred to community development? Under shared leadership with the department that is meant to lure development in business. Combine these changes, remove any design review and remove any checks and balances within the two departments. So that that's where my major concerns lie. I do think that we should under title two, we should be recommending to the city council that we include the powers and duties that were previously held under the DRB to add it to the language for the planning commission. And that we should actually recommend or change our bylaws to include on section one point two of our bylaws and one point three, which is purpose and committee responsibility, committee responsibility, that we amend those sections as well so that we assume the responsibilities of the that are the of the proposed dissolved. I don't know how to say that. Basically, if we're dissolving the DRB, we should assume those responsibilities in writing.
I would, maybe not a counterpoint, but maybe I would urge us to maybe zoom out a little bit and think more about the function and the purpose and in the intent behind why we're making this change. I think that a lot of the discussion about today has focused more on bylaws and sort of the minutia of of this, but I think we're kind of missing the bigger economic picture, which is like the reason why that A, we have a backlog of developers who are not going to develop here at all unless we change the process. Right? So when people ask like, what's the hurry? Well, I mean, again, if we want to be like honest to the name, responsible growth, like we have no growth in the current, you know, in the current scheme, right? The reason why we have no growth in the current scheme, I mean, there are a lot of reasons, but part of the reason why is because we have, I would argue, over representation of certain specific voices within the community. I think it's a bit of a grotesque thing to come here and say that this is about equity in the community, but like nobody here in this room is a native Spanish speaker, for example. And we have the highest density of native Spanish speakers in the entire country in a census tract in this in this community. Right? That's not being represented in anything that I'm seeing being pushed as like this is going to make things more representative. Right? The reality is that a majority of Californians have already voted for a solution. The solution is to actually take power away from local bodies because they get over represented by specific communities which are functionally in support of the redlined history of of the community. Right? So it's functionally a structurally unequal thing that we're looking to to promote and support. Right? So all of these things are connected. The reason why we don't have growth right now is because all that's coming to a head. The community has already voted for this change, like on the side. They've already voted for a state regime that says, no, we're going to take power away. They've already voted on the local level for politicians that are on board with that. Right? Mayor Kate, the the city, the city council that we have right now. So the community has already spoken about what they want to see. The community doesn't have the time to show up to every single meeting that's in their neighborhood to say, I have an opinion about this. Right? And the other issue is that like when we give too much voice to that, we end up hijacking projects. I mean, some of these projects that we've seen, they've like they've run into seven figures worth of cost because we've had them come back to meeting after meeting after meeting because people seem to think that like people developing their private property is like a wish list of what they can make demands on people. Right? Functionally, like we don't get development at all if there's no financial feasibility to these projects. And we make these projects unfeasible because we're trying to put an excessive level of control. And like, oh, I want the architect to say like, I want palm trees everywhere. I hate palm trees or whatever. And I mean, like, the reality is, what is the rush? The rush is the fact that like, we had a person in our community die because they couldn't access telecommunications. Right? And we have members in our community that came and appealed building better towers because they wanted to get a better view of their fricking land. Right? We have members of the community that come up and show up and like create obstacles. And that's why we have this backlog of people that say, if you guys don't change your process, we're not going to come develop here. Right? So this is not a case of like, we're picking and choosing people to come here and say, okay, no, we don't like this developer. We like you instead. This is a case of like, we have Mayor Kate like begging people to come develop stuff. Right? You got, none of you guys have elementary school kids, I don't think. I mean, I do, right? Our issue is that teachers are leaving because they can't afford to live here. Like, we're losing service people everywhere because they can't afford to live here. So like the rush is, we gotta build stuff. Yeah, I get it. Everybody wants the whole place to look like Terre Linda. I get it. But like, your community members have voted for something different. They don't want this. You are not representing their voice when you're saying this kind of stuff. When you're saying that a majority of the of the people ought to be licensed, whatever. Right? That completely excludes a huge portion of the community from participating in any of this. Right? So I want to focus on the big picture here, which is we have an economic crisis in the city. We have to be flexible in changing our structure so that we can ensure growth actually happens. And you know what? We're looking at changing the 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 structure today. So what precludes us from changing it in ten years' time? When we have a bigger flood, the economic conditions have changed, and now we have more people who want to build here. Right? So instead of saying, look, we can't do anything because, oh, my God, I didn't have enough say in this, like, A, all this stuff has been discussed for years. There have been numerous issues. It's not. It's not government's responsibility to come to your bedroom and like hand you everything that used to happen. Like, the stuff is online. These conversations have been happening, right? People, you guys knew to show up here. Right? So I mean, like, the stuff is posted. Right? The stuff is here. If people want to talk about it, they want to show up, they want to show up. But this is who showed up. This is who showed up. So we need to make changes to make the city better. Okay, well, then let's make this change. We don't have discretion on like forcing city council to do X, Y, Z. So I feel as if we're kind of wasting our time to kind of getting into the weeds of saying like, you know, this power of the design review board needs to come over here because like, wait, if twenty two of twenty six have been canceled, that means that they're not a useful board. Like, that's the reality, that they're not useful if we have to cancel this many meetings. It's not that community voice is squashed, it's that we don't have projects going through that need their that need their time. So if that's the case, then we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be like counting chips over like what powers of this DRB here. We have staff. I mean, we have, we spend a lot of time hiring staff. I mean, we've dealt with lots of turnover. Like, these are the people that have the expertise to do that. The check and balance is having community members on the the planning commission who are representing the people in their particular district. That's why we went to district based, was for that exact reason. Like, we don't need a panel of architects to come here and say, don't build this. Like, we need people who are bringing lived experiences and like some level of insights to like the finance or whatever. But like, that's the kind of stuff that I think that that we need, right? And hell, yeah, this is my my last session, so whatever. But, you know, that has been like my singular frustration, I would say. Right? If 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 I wasn't leaving because like, you know, I have a, you know, my own business is sort of taking off in a different country, right? I would say that like the thing that would make me leave San Rafael is, like I said, I have two young kids. But like, I have no green space in my in my community. Like, my community is not represented at all in any of these. I'm like, I'm the only person from my district that shows up. Right? Of any age. So like, there's, there's no, there's no real representation and for most of the city when it comes to like who's showing up to these, who's actually like influencing in person, people sitting sitting on this. So that's what I'm saying is that like all of that is already embodied in in state law that's coming down. So we don't have to worry about that. What we have to worry about is like, what is a process that like works? That gets development that's that's good into the project that puts pressure on developers to like play ball with us, but at the same time, like recognizing our leverage as a city in this whole process, which is very little, very little leverage right now. So I think that's like the biggest comment that I have without getting too much into the minutia. You know, I think that can be something that can be litigated, you know, by people who are more sort of focused on that than me. But I think that would be just sort of the the big piece that I would just say is that like, look, we 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 need to make some changes. Otherwise, like, we're going to lose our teachers, our service members. Like, businesses aren't going to be able to hire people because like they can't come to to the office, like, you know. Like, that's why there is a rush. Like, I mean, great that you've lived here for thirty years and you have the financial flexibility to sit back and say, hey, no, I'll slow down. But like I said, we have community members that are living. Yeah, it is personal. People are living on the street. Nope, this is not. This is not your time to talk. This is my time to talk.
Please, ma'am.
This is my time to talk. Don't.
I'll just mention also the term ghetto is.
Yes, that was actually what triggered me. Was you coming here talking about, we don't want this to turn into a ghetto. Well, we have a ghetto and canal because this community has been historically redlined. Where you live, there were racially restrictive covenants until the nineteen seventies.
Ma'am, 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 ma'am.
This entire community is based on that, and we need to make a change. The community has voted for that. Doesn't matter what you have to say about it. The community has voted for that. These changes are, they have to happen. So what we have to talk about right now is what is the next step? What is, what do we have to do with these specific titles? What what is relevant and pertinent? What, what is relevant and pertinent for us to recommend to city council? And what do they need to do to make the next steps? So that's, that's what I have to say about that.
I have a comment?
No.
Yeah, um, you know, Commissioner Sadi, I agree with a lot of the points that you made, but I have some concern over too many projects, small projects coming to the planning commission. If I look at what the design review board covered out of their six meetings that they had in '23, only two, three of those items actually came to the planning commission. Others were about retaining walls and single family homes. And I don't, I think we need to be careful about asking for too much to come here. That would really come up the, uh, project.
And I think, I mean, to further the discussion, there are, like, I don't think we should be reviewing the retaining walls and stuff, there were comments about that. I think things like height, like, like providing exceptions for height within the downtown core specifically, yeah, like those are important. Um, we need to get this passed. We need to get it passed because we know there are people waiting. And then we know that the, there is a rush because we know the city council's meeting on Friday to get this thing done, so we can get it done. But I also think that we need to get it done the right way. And, I mean, it's not a lot of changes. I went through a lot of items. Some of them are questions, some of them are things that we don't have to review. But I think there are items that are important. And I think if we're gonna dissolve the DRB, um, then we need to make sure that we have a system in place to, to take over some of those functions. If we're gonna go through the process of having requirements for so many design professionals, like, why have them? If we, you know, that's the bigger question if we zoom out, if we're not addressing the other items.
I feel like we could give it a couple more weeks at least, you know? Maybe not like two more months or whatnot, but ask the city council to meet on this, um, maybe just very quickly on Friday and then give, give the public another couple weeks for comment. Um, I feel like it's, it's that important. And to my knowledge, um, it hasn't officially come up, um, you know, besides, at least recently, besides just this instance. So, um, it feels rushed to me. Um, the other thing I'll mention is that I am in favor of it. Um, I, I, I think that combining the board, um, to your point, is going to expedite um, growth here, which we need. And I think also, um, combining the boards will have a synergistic effect because, um, we will be able to work directly with the design review board um, and, you know, calibrate things that may need calibration. Um, uh, it's, yeah, I mean, the, um, you know, the term divide and conquer, um, that was used to divide and conquer Native Americans, right? So, um, it's good to have, um, a, a combined force essentially that's stronger than two. Um, the other thing I'll mention is that I feel like when we, um, you know, when we make our, our recommendation, we do really have to put an emphasis on improving the objective design standards, not only for, um, the, um, the community at large, but also for the downtown precise plan. Because, um, those objective design standards are consistent with state law and they are intended to expedite, um, development. But they have to be, um, they have to be obviously, uh, created in a way um, that makes the growth consistent with what we want to see in San Rafael and hopefully not hindering, right? Um, but, uh, and, and ideally that will, um, like those two combined things, like basically like, the combined planning commission and design review board body, plus a, like a very sort of well thought out, um, well defined, well, and, and effective objective design standard, I feel like that's a recipe for success, right? Cause when projects come to us, and I feel like it would be good also to note to the, to the city council that we should ensure that the criteria are properly defined to determine which projects come to the planning commission versus which can be decided by the community development director. Um, but when they do come to us, um, hopefully it won't be a, a heavy lift to, um, to, you know, compare the projects, uh, characteristics to the objective design standards. And hopefully we won't have, uh, exceptionally long meetings, right? So, yeah, I mean, I feel like, I, I mean, I'm very optimistic about this, actually. Um, so, and, but, I mean, it has to be done in the right way. But I think with those, um, sort of like additional recommendations, um, I think we'd be good to go. And the last thing I, I'll, I'll mention is that, um, we have to trust the city. We have to, to, to trust these people in front of us to, to do a good job and not take advantage of, um, you know, their power, um, or take advantage of us. And I think we do have a good trust relationship, even though, um, we haven't been working together very long. I have a, I have a good vibe, right?
Did you just meet tonight?
No, we met, we met a few months ago when Ally was still here, yeah. And, um, yeah, so I'm, I'm optimistic about this change, yeah.
Good. Um, I'll, I'll be relatively brief. I, I completely agree with Commissioner Prevettelli. No, I'm sorry, Mr. Sumutzi. Um, we, we need to streamline for streamlined sake, because we have to get stuff done and we haven't been. We also need to streamline because, um, a, a lot of what we have done in the past, we can't do anymore. We, we don't have purview, so there is more limited scope. And so combining makes an enormous amount of sense. Um, uh, in terms of, of waiting another couple of weeks, I, I, I'm not enthusiastic about that because we had the first meeting last week and, okay, fair enough, there wasn't enough warning. But everybody who should be paying attention to this would know that there was this meeting coming up after last week. Um, and I don't think they were going to get much more attention if we wait a couple more weeks. Um, so, um, I would like, I, I would like for somebody to make a motion um, that incorporates recommendations, uh, the recommendations put forward by Commissioner Sadi. Um, and were there other recommendations that we should add on? And so our role is to approve with recommendations or not.
I think just to send recommendations.
We send, but with Title 14, we can actually modify those things.
Okay.
That's what we have control over. I don't think we need to hit every single item that I ask questions on.
Okay.
Um, but I do think we, we should go ahead and make a motion to modify the Title 14 items, get Title 2, get the other stuff approved, like, let's send it on.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't.
This is the one, right?
No, we decided not to. Yeah, yeah, so, um, and I, I mean, I'm probably like the only one that's going to go through Title 14 that I can try to do it quickly here and get it through because I was more particular about it. I mean, there are certain things that I feel like are more important than others. But I also, I, I, what I don't know how to solve, and it would be good to have a discussion on this, is like, how we deal with the responsibilities and the role situation? Because, you know, like, I mean, yeah, we're going to ask them to define, you know, have a clear definition on a design professional. We're gonna, we're gonna have to figure out, like, once this first meeting comes. Before that, we're gonna have to work with staff to figure out how the meeting runs and how all the meetings flow or whatever, we can do that. But if our purpose and our functions are not, are not modified, then like, we're just absolving the design review board. And, and I, I agree that like, yeah, we, we have, the state has voted, the community has voted, but those are about housing. I think there are other, like, we kind of are overshadowing some other things. And I think, I just don't want to lose the baby with the bathwater. And I want to make sure that we keep intact some of the functions that, you know, from personal experience on the DRB that we've been able to, some of the things that we've been able to achieve. And I don't think we, I mean, I agree with like, I am, I think that getting housing built is like one of the, should be the number one important issue. It is for us, for the Canal, you know, for the McAllen Islands. It's for a lot of other bodies that are trying to do great things for the city. We need to get it done, but we can't just not like throw away the design review board.
Could I, could I comment on that real quick?
Yeah.
Um, okay, so hopefully your, um, your recommendations, you know, maintain the roles and responsibilities and the criteria for the design review board. I think that's what you were suggesting before, so I, I think that, I think we're good to go. I mean, the other thing I, 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 um, I was thinking about the same problem that you were, that you were talking about quite a bit before this meeting. And, um, I think it's also incumbent on, um, I, I believe it's the, it's the mayor and the city council who appoint members to the design review board, just like they appoint us. It's really incumbent on them to ensure that, um, we are qualified to do this work, you know? So my point is that it's, um, I don't feel like, you know, we could put forth the, uh, criteria that, you know, we have, um, but, uh, that's probably not good enough even. And, um, adding, you know, even more definition or more criteria, I, I don't think, um, it would have sort of like diminishing returns. So what we really have to rely on is that, uh, the mayor and the city council hire people who are qualified.
Yeah, and I agree with you on that. Like, I think, and Commissioner Sumutzi brought up a really good point in the last meeting, which is like barrier entry. And like, we, we already have so many barriers, like, having licensers and all these other things.
Yeah.
Are maybe not the right way to go, but I think that, that the city council has done a good job of putting bodies in these seats to date. And we have, we have enough language in here, we just got to make sure we get real definitions so that we, with the public knows and we know what to expect, right? We just need to have language, you know? We don't need to put high, like, super, we can't, we don't have to put barriers of entry to those standards, but we have to have standards set.
Yeah. Um, the only other thing I would recommend is that we sort of like, um, we try to codify uh, that, um, that plan to, uh, flesh out the objective design, uh, standards with the new hire, um, within ideally like a year, you know? So just, so we don't lose sight of this, what I feel like is very important and highly complimentary effort.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that the, I think one thing to add to that is that the downtown precise plan has a lot of suggestions and not a lot of objectivity. And that makes it hard for us and for developers. So like, a lot of, you know, suggestions and all that stuff. To me, like, the downtown precise plan is like more of a, more work than the objective standards in a lot of ways, because that's where we're going to see a lot of these projects put to test, right? We have to have that, that's where, that's where the rubber is going to hit the road in the next few years.
So through the chair, if I could maybe offer up, um, approach of how to tackle this, there's, there's, there's three areas, right? Three different ordinances, uh, Title II, Title 14 and Title 15. And maybe if we can try to at least incorporate what you want to talk about for each provision, because then I'll actually give a little clearer direction, particularly when you go into 14 about what you are agreeing to, that the planning commission will retain the review authority versus, uh, the, the community economic development director, so.
So I, if, if I'm understanding the conversation correctly, which I may be missing a thing or two, uh, it seems like we might have recommendations as pertaining to sections 1.2, 1.3 of the bylaws reconciling the bylaws and incorporating into the planning commission bylaws elements of the DRB bylaws?
Correct. And then I think what, um, um, I want to say Commissioner Hinkle, but I think Commissioner, Director Hinkle, is suggesting is that we kind of break it up into like Title II, which is recommendations, and then Title 14, which is, we can change. We can decide to accept or change the language that's been put forth.
Okay.
And 15, 15 is like two pages long, it doesn't really have anything. I think the 14 is more meaty.
Right. So, so, so my sense is that a motion would include acceptance of two, modifications to 14 that you highlighted, um, and acceptance of 15.
Well, I think two, what's not printed out in two, that is actually part of two, is a section on the planning commission. So I think two, I would like to recommend that we modify the language in, in Title II to include, um, the, um, the functions and, I don't know, the functions and responsibilities of the DRB and include that language into the, um, I think it's, I have it in here. So section 216110 is powers and duties of planning commission. And it's not printed out in this, in our packet.
So what I would like to do is invite you to make a motion.
Okay. Can we, can we break it up in pieces? Can we break it up in pieces? Christine, can you help us like formulate this?
I can.
Okay, great.
So what I'm hearing is that you would like to make a recommendation to staff to reevaluate the DRB powers and duties in Title II and ensure that all of the responsibilities for the DRB are adequately described and incorporated into the planning commission?
Correct. Specifically under Title 216110, under powers and duties of the planning commission. I would just take those three points from, um, 216122, um, the three paragraphs. And I, I think our recommendation would be to insert those into that section.
And I, I think we don't want to insert all of them verbatim, but staff will take a close look and bring over what, what we feel is appropriate to add some more description.
Correct. That would be great.
And then what I heard was a recommendation to adopt the ordinance for Title 14 and direction for staff to take a closer look at some of the authority, the delegating of authorities and where possible, it, to streamline and ensure that all of the, uh, appropriate projects going to the planning commission are very clearly going to the planning commission.
But in Title 14, can't we make?
And I think you can.
Changes to those?
You could make those specific changes. Should you want to see those items come to the planning commission, let's go ahead and select those and be clear, like the height you described.
Yeah.
That that item is not a director item, but a planning commission item.
Got it. So we can, we don't have to recommend those to staff right now?
Not a recommendation, it was a recommendation to council for adoption, because that's what they're, they're evaluating.
Could we do this to make this meeting quicker? Is to say like, we will recommend, um, council to adopt sections two and sections 15? That doesn't help any of the projects coming through the pipeline. We need to have Title 14.
We need to have Title 14.
Be wrapped up.
So that's what I'm saying, if we, if we have the time to resolve this, like, let's go through those specific items. Like, you call them out the height and let's call it the page number, the title number, and then we'll amend that strike through and actually replace the planning commission.
I, I have an idea. Um, do you think maybe we could just, uh, use the criteria of the appraised value of the project, like the project's budget? Like, say if a, if, if a project was over, say like $10 million, it would come to us?
I think it's even simpler than that because the code in the other, in other parts is really clear about where the projects go to. I think a lot of those mentions don't actually even need to be there because the authority is in other parts of the code. So what my recommendation would be is if it's already in the code and it says what decision ma, what the decision-making body is, it's not in those sections that we just went through. Those seem like additional ancillary descriptions and we can probably just delete.
Like, for instance, a height exception, like, if an exception is, like, if it, there was an exception, it should go to us and not just to staff, correct? That, that's what I'm trying to, yeah, which are the things that I'm concerned about. I'm not concerned about like retaining walls and things like that.
So that's for us to help move this forward and for a recommendation, we have to be very specific about what that section is and what the recommendation from the planning commission is on that section.
Okay.
So if you want to retain, retain that, you know, authority that used to go to the design review board for, uh, the precise plan.
Yeah.
Then we call it out and let's call it out as planning commission.
Okay. And then I guess, yeah, I know.
Director, I have no issue with it.
I know, I know, you don't want to have that responsibility. I have a question for my fellow commissioners. Okay, there's a lot of items where it was stricken out to say like, you know, instead of DRB, it goes to like, it either gets stricken out totally or it goes to them. Um, do we want to just go through each item? Do you guys want to say like, look, let's just make a recommendation to have all of those changed because it doesn't really matter?
Yeah, is there an omnibus, omnibus way that we could do that? Because I, I feel as if, A, it's going to be an unwieldy motion to have like 40 different individual clauses to be modified. And I, I just kind of like the suggestion of like, if we just say broadly, these are the things that we want to do and we just leave it in staff's discretion um, to, to actually like work through which ones actually make sense. Um, and maybe have like some specific guidance if there's like a particular lens that you want them to evaluate that within, that might make it a bit of an easier motion to make.
Yeah. And I think like, you know, I had a lot of items, but a lot of them are not necessarily ones that we have to go over. I think it's, like, you're right, like, some of them were questions. I think it's, like, you're right, like, some of them were questions, some of them, I think we, staff went ahead and created answers for. I think the ones that I'm, I guess the general, if we look, zoom out and don't think about like changing the name of one thing to the next, the bigger question is, if we are combining the bodies or making the process more efficient, and we're trying to like, have generally, like, we know for those housing projects, we don't have a lot of discretion. So a lot of this stuff, like, this language doesn't pertain to that. So I think, why, I guess, my bigger question is, why are we pulling the discretion out of the body and in the public process? And kind of putting, that, that's a bigger question, I think I was trying to get to with all of those questions. And I think it'd be good to hear from you guys on how you feel about that.
Can I interject a little? What was the height one, so I can look that up while you're deliberating?
Do we want to go through, do we want to go through items, which is sorry, that you, you highlighted, and see if we can pull out general theme instead of specific?
Yeah, and I can like try to go through these pretty quick, because some of them I have listed as questions, and then some of them I have listed as things. So how about this? We'll try to, we'll like set a Pomodoro timer for 12. That's what I do in my house. There were, yeah, when it's all said and done, I think there were not that many. I think the bigger, the bigger thing, you know, like, yeah, like 070, we, we don't need to have or planning commission mission, because we know that that has to come to us, right? So like, that one, we don't have to worry about. I think it's section, like, if we go to page 190 of the PDF, or sorry, page 124, it's Section 1416190.
Hold on, 124, okay.
Yeah, that is the one about the heights. Items two and four, I think those should be planning commission. So we will change those. And then for number four, design review board was underlined, and then, but I'm guessing that was a typo, that was just supposed to be that. Okay. And then for number five as well then. So we'll change number two, number four, and number five to planning commission. That one was the one that I felt like was more important. The hotels one didn't really matter, because that one is, that one was fine. I think number, let's see.
And I think in these cases, this is language that's saying that the recommendation of the planning director, but it's still being approved by the planning commission.
Commission, okay.
So it doesn't really make sense to have a recommendation of the planning commission to the planning commission.
Are you saying that for 120, the, the height bonuses?
So it's, what the language says is with the recommendation of the design review board, but the body that acts on it is the planning commission. So if we change that to the planning commission, it would be the recommendation of the planning commission to the planning commission.
So, so in A, it states that it shall be granted by the planning commission?
Oh, okay, let me get to that page, so I can just make sure I can, I'm following you guys. Okay, so it'd be granted by the?
So if you go, if I can help, if you go under A, "A height bonus requested under this section shall be granted by the planning commission through an environmental and design review in the downtown district."
Got it.
So it's coming to us.
So it's already coming to you.
It's coming to us.
Yes.
Got it. Okay.
So what this is just saying is before it would go to the design review board first.
It would go to the planning, okay.
And so now the planning director has to make the recommendation. We could probably just delete it altogether, and just because it's under the, the authority of the planning.
Okay, so.
But it doesn't make sense for the planning commission to make a recommendation.
So then would we just go ahead and, would it make more sense to strike all that instead of changing it?
I think what I would, I think in general, there's a lot of instances like this where it's, it's a little bit complicated language, and we could have some direction to just take a closer look at that and make sure that it's as clear as possible.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that, if you guys are.
Yes.
And then I think it's like, the sign ordinances, I think that should just be to us. And that's in Section 43, and then.
What page?
197.
I would just give a cautionary tale, having gone through this, I don't know.
We don't see every sign permit. This is for, this is for other stuff.
Sign programs.
Yeah, we're not, no, 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 this is not for that. This is, yeah, no, please, I don't want to see every sign. I really don't. Nor do I want to make that arduous for anybody.
Where was your, the comment on signs?
It was Section, it was page 187, Section 1419, 43.
Page 197?
Yes.
Review authority?
A and B, under review authority.
So what's being removed is the design review board shall serve as an advisory body to the planning commission and the community development director on all sign programs and environmental review permits for building and site improvements. That includes signs.
So, so C, we're okay striking it?
Uh huh. Yeah, C, we're okay striking it. I think it's B, or, sorry, A1. So.
A1's just deleting that the director can refer a sign permit to the design review board.
Yeah. Officially approved design permit, for design permit application to the design review board for advisory view. Okay.
So, so for clarity on that, the community development director has the ability to refer anything to the planning commission? So.
Yeah, in general.
Yeah.
Okay.
That is the, the binding authority, so striking that doesn't really.
Striking it's bound to.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. 231, I'm just going to go over these. The landscaping one, I think that we should, like, Item F, I'm sorry, page 217 of the PDF, Item F, those, we should review them, it's the planning commission?
Hold on, please. 1217.
Page, page 231 of 263?
Sorry, 217 is the actual page number, but it's PDF 231, you're right. I'm trying to get this, through this too fast, because I'm worried about you guys being here all night. Sorry, guys.
Let me just go, I want to go back up to the top to see what we're actually talking about. So this says authority, "The planning director shall approve, conditionally approve or deny applications for exceptions. The planning director shall review and decide the following types of exceptions." So the authority is with the planning director. And so previously, the design review board would, would review. And so now, because the, the authority is already with the planning director, it's, it's the planning director. So it, I don't, we would want to change it up top if you want that to go to the planning commission. I don't know that.
But if we're, if we're, if we're, if it's saying that like, basically the developer can reduce percentages required for landscaping?
Yeah, but let's go, can you go up to the top for me? And let's read under 1424020.
Okay.
So this is the beginning of a section. So the planning director shall approve, conditionally approve or deny applications for exceptions. So the director shall review and decide the following types of exceptions to the site development standards. And so we don't want to have an inconsistency in the section where the authority is with the planning director, and then some things under there go to the planning commission.
Can we strike F completely?
I think we could change, remove the term director, because it's already there on the top.
But so, we, we could ask you to review that section for deletion?
Yeah, because I think when we're looking at multifamily residential districts and non-residential districts, those are bigger developments. I just feel like we should, the planning commission should, like, I just don't think that that change, that exception to minimum percentages should be made. Like, it should be a bigger public process if we're going to do that.
For a larger project.
Yeah.
So for, and, and, and I think it, it remains so, doesn't it?
No, not, not under this language. Multifamily residential districts require buffer landscaping to be modified, subject to review by the planning director. Non-residential districts, minimum landscaping percentages may be reduced for remodel projects by the planning director. So like, say for instance, there's like the Ritter Center project that we saw, and they want to, they want to get an exception for the minimum landscaping percentages. I feel like that's a project that we should, if they're going to do that, that should be part of the review of our project. We shouldn't allow that exception to be made by staff.
So that would be a part of our review?
So for clarity, reading through this, the planning direct, this is two, two circumstances. You know, the first one is an approved multifamily project that already has an approval, that the planning director for landscaping for number one, the planning director could modify the landscaping buffer area where innovative landscape design is pros in special circumstances. So in, in essence, the development of a new project, the planning commission's already approved, it's already built, now they want to come back in and change the landscaping that was approved. They can do that at a director level, and they can modify it if they can demonstrate that buffer is innovative design in special circumstances. So that's, yeah, the first one. The second one is remodel projects. So existing 1970s, you know, project was approved 1980 or 1970s by the commission. There's a specific condition that says you have to have this tree, this landscaping, this, this design. The director can modify those standards, just as long as there's adequate part.
Can you, can you explain number one to me? Because I'm not seeing where the approved, previously approved is.
I take these as minor modifications, like, so it really goes into the, the authority, right? Let's go back into.
You were saying it's approved. I, I don't see where it's already been approved by the planning commission.
So I think you have to look at the, if you want to see, I wish I could share my screen. So in.
I can.
I don't, I can on this one. On 1425, environmental and design review permits outlines what is a major and what is a minor. And so a major includes landscaping as part of the development, subject to a major environment and design review project. So if there's a big project downtown, that's coming to the planning commission, and you'll be looking at all of that comprehensively. And this other section is, is the, where it says the, the modification, where I read that, is that in landscaping required, I read the, it the same way, that the required buffered landscaping required being as adopted as part of a larger project. It's not clear.
Yeah, to me, when I read that, it says like, oh yeah, we can have, those things can be reduced or changed through staff. It doesn't, it, to me, I, I guess, I'm having a hard time understanding how that's like.
I understand.
You know what I mean?
I agree with how you want to, to level it. I think what we really need to do is delete that whole sentence, subject to the review of the planning director, because the authority is higher up in the, in the section.
Okay, I'm, I'm totally open to that. So should we do that for both, one and two?
I think, I think for, I think we'll probably need to take a closer look to a lot of those and delete all of that if we want.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
If staff could review that, that section.
Yeah, and we can always come back to. I, I know that we haven't done code changes in a long time, but when, you know, like, sometimes the, the exception, if you want to change the authority for the exception from staff to the planning commission, that's almost like a whole other topic that we would want to bring back.
Okay.
And we can do that on the other side of.
Yes, we can do it on the other side.
Yeah, and then I guess the last one that I feel like is worth discussing is Section 142520, which is, page 235 in the PDF, minor environmental design review permit. So can you explain to me in better detail why that is all stricken, struck? Struck, not stricken, struck.
We already have the authority, if you go back to the heading?
Oh, okay, nevermind.
That's about the planning.
That's, that's the one, okay.
And this is just removing that something could go to the DRB. It'll just, if we want to refer it, we can refer to the planning commission.
Okay. So I think really, when we are looking at Section, Title 14, can you summarize what we actually are, are we changing anything?
I think it's just the direction is for staff to take a closer look to ensure clarity and consistency and wherever possible.
Okay, and then if we wanted, if, if the commissioners took a closer look at this, and we wanted to pose, propose amendments, could we do that in future meetings? Before it goes to the, but then the, we'd have to push it to council to have them approve, adopt it? Okay.
I, I think that, through the chair, I think the time to do that is when we actually evaluate our entire zoning code. Like, there's a lot of these questions we're coming across, like, why are we doing, why are we going this road? I think there'll be an opportunity when we do a comprehensive evaluation of the zoning code update, we'll get all our districts, the, the land use provisions, and go into these authority pieces. So I do think there'll be an opportunity to do that, in greater depth, to this level of like, which one's more appropriate, how does that work, and what does that mean?
Yeah.
So I do, I do think that, and that is an item that is necessary and needed on the work plan. So this is something the planning commission will review.
Yeah, okay. And then for Title II, can you remind us of, it's, we're adding that language? I feel like there was something else there. We're adding the language into the planning commission.
I have a recommendation for staff to evaluate the, the DRB powers and duties and ensure that all of the applicable powers and duties are incorporated into the planning commission powers and duties.
Okay. And then, can we also add that staff work on a clear definition of design professional?
Give me a moment, I'll pull that up and I'll read that again.
While you're looking that up, I think part of the complication is that we have like the rules and procedures. We have Title II, and that we have like so many different areas where, and then like we had the rules and bodies of all the commissions. So there's all these different documents.
It's a pile of spaghetti.
It is.
And you're trying to sift through and pick out individual pieces.
I think why that, in last meeting, it was really hard, because it just seemed like it was like too much to take in. And then as I looked in it, it's super confusing. But I do think in general, we need to like get rid of all these different rule, like all these different ordinances and rules and stuff in all these different places, and try to make it like, so that it's in one place. Like the municipal, like, why are the objective design standards, like, and the downtown precise plan, like, they should be found in the municipal code? Like, all these things are just in too many different places.
It's a lot of work to do.
Yeah, I know, you guys, a lot of work to do.
I'm sorry to bring up just one other question or topic, and that is, I forget how, what we're talking about, sort of interplays with his, historical, historically significant structures. I think there's a, there's a survey, right? That's been done, and is it right that any modification to a historically significant building on that survey has to come to the design review board? Is that how it works? Do you guys know? The reason I'm asking is I'm just wondering if we should make a recommendation that, that, that we take a look at that survey, just to make sure that it's extensive enough? I think the last time it was created may have been in like 2017, just based on what I'm finding online. So, and I, I think I, I have heard city staff talk about wanting to expand the list.
I think that's a separate, separate topic for another day.
Yeah, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, if that's, if that is something that, I mean, not to belabor the point, but if that is something that is going to be affected by this decision, that perhaps maybe we could just at least mention it, just like we're mentioning, fleshing out the objective design standards. I'm hoping to sort of bundle all the stuff that's related into our recommendations for city council.
So I've written that down. Would it help if I summarize those? So for Title II, I have a recommendation for staff to evaluate the design review board powers and duties and ensure all powers and duties are appropriately incorporated into the planning commission powers and duties. into the planning commission powers and duties. For Title 14, a direction to staff to evaluate the recommended amendments to ensure clarity and all the clarity on the authority throughout all of the sections. And direction for staff to evaluate the definition of a design professional.
And can you add incorporate it into Title II? Or I guess it wouldn't be in the title itself, but I don't know where it would sit.
It is going to be in the title.
Okay.
It'll be in the. Actually, that's why I was trying to pull my staffer up for that. It actually, that was a comment made, we did catch it staff. And we did actually establish, since we read back at the, at the last planning commission hearing, there is, there will be a definition. So I think the recommendation would is define the design professional.
I actually have a question. So say there's, this gets adopted and we have an application put forth and there's like a meeting that's going to happen in a month or something. Or do we have like a plan to get, like I know there's already been some outreach and stuff, but like, does staff think that we can get these seats filled before we need them?
Well, you have to remember there's a staggered process for this, right? So if their planning commission moves forward and provides a recommendation, city council actually has to adopt it and then have a first reading. And then there's a second reading. And then there's a 30-day timeframe afterwards. So during that period of time, that's where I believe the staff will work with council in terms of their prerogative, in terms of how they like to either recruit or appoint those, those seats should they move forward.
Okay, at this point, would anyone like to make a motion to recommend approval of the resolution found in the packet to recommend that the city council, A, modify Title II to add design professionals to the planning commission? B, amend other municipal code references to the designer review board as described in the staff report on resolution, subject to the following set of recommendations from the planning commission? Is that?
Do you want me to read those again for the record? In Title II, recommend staff evaluate design review board powers and duties and incorporate, ensure all are incorporated into the planning commission powers and duties. In Title 14, staff to evaluate the recommended amendments to ensure clarity on the delegation of authority. And staff to add a definition of design professional and incorporate that definition into Title II.
Would anybody like to make such a motion?
So moved.
Can we have a second? Commissioner Sambudzy moved. A second?
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Rodby seconds. Christina, would you take the role, please?
Commissioner Privatelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodby.
Yes.
Commissioner, I need help from announcing this. Sambudzy. Commissioner Saudi.
Yes.
And Chair Havman.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to the director's report.
Brief report, I just wanted to greater introduce our new principal planner, Christina. And then really appreciate her effort to drop, jump in with our planning manager out sick today.
Welcome Christina, you've done a, a great job tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then do any PC members have any communication? No communication? Okay, then this meeting is adjourned.